Alright, so it says you're live on YouTube.
Yes, hello, thanks, Jisty. So, welcome to everyone, to our meeting. This is our special meeting of council, January 30th. It's being livestreamed, so welcome to any public who are watching us, and all of our staff and our council. So I guess this is our first year, first meeting of the year. So, welcome to 2022. So tonight, I'm going to open our meeting with a moment of silence. And before we begin, I'd like to say that this is the first meeting of council since the passing of Norma Ford. We pass on our condolences to her husband, Bodhi, and their family. Norma became a fixture in municipal politics in Montague, and has been for many years, with her keen interest in making sure that we made the right decision for the taxpayers. We know that Norma didn't always agree, but we would always hear how she felt. This is the residents' right, and which is the beauty of municipal politics. After all, we are closest to the people. So I'd like to just say, thanks to Norma for being an important part of it. And we, as I said, we pass on our condolences to the family and to friends. So if we can now have a moment of silence, please, thank you. Thanks, everyone. We do have a motion here. It was moved by Jeff Carroll and seconded by Karen Jennings. That's the special meeting of council agenda dated January 13, 2022, be approved as circulated. All in favor? And that's carried. And now, before we do begin, the rest of the meeting, I think it's also fitting that we welcome you back, Jasmine. Even though it's for a short time, we do welcome you back. And we also have to congratulate you on behalf of Montague for your promotion, I think I could say, your new position with the county. We want to congratulate you. You certainly deserve it. When we first found out at the county that you were going to be having this position, I did say at the meeting, I said, we were winners and losers. We're losers in Montague, but we gained you at the county level, and which we all pay into. So we really appreciate everything that you've done, and we're happy that you're back for a very short time. And we'll be looking forward to seeing you at the county. So congratulations, Jasmine.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Okay, now, moving on, we've adopted the agenda. I'll also have to remind all of council that if you do have any disclosure of interest, you can declare it now or anytime during the meeting. And we have a very short agenda, but there are only one report, and that's going to be yours, Jasmine. And this was on the clerk administrator hiring process. So I'm going to pass this part of the meeting over to you, Jasmine, to present this to us. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Reeve Dobson. So basically, given that my position will be vacant effective February 1st, it's essential for council to be able to provide some direction on how you'd like the clerk administrator hiring panel to function. It's important to note that the clerk administrator position is special in the township. Is it, is that it's council's position? It's the only position that reports directly to council. So it's definitely prudent, more prudent for council to have a more involved role in the hiring process of the individual. So this process is really outside of our approved hiring policy. So I'm seeking direction on a number of items so that I can, while I'm still here, assist you in that process and the staff that are at the township now can move this process forward. So there's four items. So we're looking at preferred staff involvement, the shortlisting and selection process, how you want the hiring panel to look, and potential updates or changes to the job description, which is an attachment to this report. So I thought that, because each one of those items kind of feed into each other, I thought that we'd start, basically ask for a direction on each item as I go. So that way, we don't, well, we'll do it per item versus waiting till the end, if that works with everybody. So the first item that I'm seeking direction from council on, you have to, you know, excuse me, I'm a little bit like almost nervous. It's been a year since I presented to council. So the first item I'm seeking direction on is the administrative support. So you will need some sort of staff or administrative support through this, through this process, to help you put together the applications, to manage the applications, to manage your meetings, and of course, to sit as clerk if the option of an all-of-council interview panel be chosen. So I put together three options for council to consider. I am willing to volunteer my time to assist this process if council also chose to take, to accept that volunteering. I'd be happy to sign an agreement to make sure that we, you know, speak to confidentiality and stuff like that. So I can sit as clerk in any of your panel and assist with council in managing the recruitment, the selection process. You can nominate a member of your senior management team to assist with the process as well. However, I do recommend against this option in general, because our township staff, it may be an additional burden to the current senior members of the township, and it may be difficult for those senior management members to provide commentary on somebody who may end up being their boss. But it's still an option that council can consider. And the final is hiring an outside agency or contractor. There are a number of different types of agencies that provide, you know, recruitment and selection assistance. They can have some additional expertise on the process. It's not an uncommon thing for council to use. However, there would be an additional cost to the township for this process. And if this is the preferred option, I can bring back to council some quotes and prices from different individuals that may be available. So I guess we'll start with that one and get some consensus on which way you'd like to move forward for that.
So thank you, Jasmine. I'm going to open it up to council. And Claus, I see your hand up first.
Thanks very much, Reeve. And Jasmine, I want to thank you very much. A very good report that you wrote up. Gives a lot of good detail. And as all your reports, very easy to read and understand. I will give my opinion right off the bat. Option number one, the current clerk administration. If you're willing to do that, I think that's fantastic. That you're willing to help us out. And we certainly would need your guidance, because you've been in the position for a number of, I don't know how many years, sorry. But I really like the idea of number one, current clerk administrator to accept the volunteering of your services to guide us through this process.
Thank you, Claus. Karen?
So I want to thank Jasmine as well for her years of service to Montague. It's been greatly appreciated, and I wish her well in moving on to the county. I think that's great. I didn't expect her to stay her life with Montague, because she's got a lot of potential to offer. So do wish you well. But in that, my option thoughts are that we seek out assistance from another level. So for example, whether we look at the clerk administrator with Elizabeth Kitley, or the CAO for Carlton Place, or the CAO deputy clerk from Lannert Highlands, they have all agreed to sit and assist us if need be. I was surprised to have the contact for them saying that they would help us out recognizing that situation we were going to be in. And I know that they all have years of service as well that they could offer. So that's an option that we could look at, is having another municipality's head person assist us, not sit on council to do the minutes, et cetera, that we would then in turn be doing something separate, but just strictly with reference to the hiring of our CA.
Karen, can I ask you a question? When, do you mean to have one of those outside people along with Jasmine or without?
Without. Have one of these outside externals sit with us. Now, Elizabeth Kitley, the individual that's over there, she has many years in with Elizabeth Kitley, but prior to that was with Becca Township. I think everybody is familiar with the CAO of Carlton Place and how long she's been in municipal politics. And then there's the gentleman from the Lannert Highlands, another small rural, who has offered his assistance as well, should we need it.
Anyone else? I'll go to you, Jeff, and then back to you, Claus.
Thanks, Reeve Dobson. I too, obviously, thank Jasmine for her years of service. You know, obviously, the only clerk that I've known since I've been on council. And, you know, I've learned a lot with Jasmine too as well, and it's been a very good experience, and I do wish her all the well. I think she'll be a great asset to the county. I'm kind of in between, I guess. I think the biggest thing is, I think we would want to see how our current clerk administrator would be able to support us through the whole process. And I think a part of that is when we hire somebody and we find somebody, and we put them in place, and how much Jasmine might be able to support that process too as well. So I'm kind of on that side of, I'm game for looking outside to get help with hiring, because I think it's very gracious that Jasmine is going to be able to volunteer and be able to help us out with some of those services. But I think the focus would be the best, the best way to utilize the maximum amount of volunteer hours we can get out of Jasmine. And if I can say, the best way I can say it is, is it a training point? And to make sure that that new person has the ability to come in and kind of get handed off properly. So I don't know if there's any sort of interest in that, but I think it's great that Council Jennings has reached out to some other experienced people in the interview and looking at that process, and then utilizing more Jasmine in the training, and getting the person, you know, hitting the ground properly. Any thoughts on that, or?
Is there, is there any interest in having both?
What do you mean?
Well, I mean, you know, Jasmine along with somebody else from another municipality.
And just as we have that interchange, if you don't mind, Reeve. I, like, listen, I have no issue. My biggest thing is, is I don't, I think it's great that Jasmine's willing to give the time. I just, I want to maximize, where can we maximize the most amount of time? And what's going to be the best asset for us? I don't, I don't want to overuse the volunteer time, per se. That would be my biggest concern, is I think really we need her to make sure that the baton is passed and all of that maybe is misunderstood or not understood is understood before it goes on.
Hey, back to you, Claus.
Yes, thanks, Reeve. I'm just curious, Council Jennings comments that she knows that these various townships are willing to help us out. Did you reach out to them, Karen, or they contacted you?
The CAO of Carlton Place offered her assistance to us. So that's how it started.
Through, through the office or to you individually?
Through me.
Okay.
Because, I mean, that does happen, right? You don't normally have the individual who's leaving you sitting on the panels, and that's where other municipalities. And so it's, you know, it's an option that we're certainly able to use, the same as other municipalities use. I mean, in Carlton Place, to be honest, we used a headhunter for the size of us. Carlton Place or Montague would not be paying for a headhunter. But the headhunter in turn started the process. He then sat, there was himself, and there was the headhunter, myself, and three council members who then shortlisted. And then they did a presentation to all of council still in camera, because of the fact it is all confidential. So, but in our case, we're not large enough to be paying for a headhunter, and we do have the ability to do it. And if we have, you know, the ability to use our surrounding municipalities that are offering assistance to us, I think we should.
So I'm going back to you, Ian, please.
Yeah, thank you very much, Reeve. And like the rest of council, Jasmine, thank you very much for your years and years of service here. You know, I remember we came from Carlton Place, and everyone was all nervous, and we had some interesting learning curves and everything else. But you've done a great job, and I wish you all the best at the county, and I know you'll do a great job there as well. So thank you very much. I too, on one hand, I really appreciate the offer from Jasmine to sit on the, to sit on the panel. I guess, I guess the thing is, is that for myself, is when we talk about time, how much time? We don't know, none of us know how long this whole process could take, how long the vetting could be, and it could be quite extensive. It is, it is for the, you know, the main, the top job in the township. And I think that at the end of the day, we don't want to rush through this process. We want to make sure that we get the right person. And this could take, I don't know what the municipal world's like in the, for hiring, but I know what the rest of the world's like. And it's hard to get employees right now. So I don't know if that's any different. It may be, it may not be. So this, this process could take a significant longer amount of time. It could be longer than, you know, two weeks. And how much time does Jasmine have to give going into a new role as well? And I don't think that we want to put a whole bunch of stuff on her shoulders. She's going to have, I'm sure, a little bit of a learning curve moving into the county and different aspects that may happen there as well. So I think that utilizing some outside services, however we might do that at the end of the day, but we need to make sure that we have the amount of time that is truly needed to commit to ensuring that we get the right applicants and we vet them properly, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And it can be a very, very time-consuming process. So I as well would like to, you know, look at outside agencies and outside assistants as much as possible. But I want to make sure that the people that we do help or bring in understand that this isn't, this isn't a rush. It's crucial that we get the right person.
Yes, before you, before I do go back to Claus, I just want to ask another question, please. Keep in mind, though, that in the past, we have had county employees help us with the hiring. And so I guess my question would be maybe to you, Jasmine. And because it's already been pointed out that this process is going to take longer than what you're with us for. So what I'm wondering is, do you know that you would be able to help continue? If we did choose the option of you helping us, do you know that you would be able to do that after you start working at the county level? Because that, that, that for me would be important. Like, I like the idea of, and certainly appreciate your offer of, of helping us to do this. Now, I'm a little, you're saying that you're volunteering to help us do this. So I'm not sure what that actually means now, but between now and, and the end of the month, you're actually working for us? You're not volunteering for us, you're working for us? So when you say you're going, you'd be volunteering to do this, is this extra time or what? And, and so, and would you foresee you being able to continue that? Because the important thing, that's already been pointed out, is that this is going to, this process is going to take longer than the two weeks. So if we chose you to be the, to be the option to help us, then I would only want, I would only be in favor of that if I thought that you would be able to continue the process after you leave, actually leave Montague. So I guess that's kind of, maybe it's putting you on the spot, but it's kind of us, you know, it's an important thing in my mind in trying to make this, the decision.
Well, thank you for the question. I guess generally, yes, I am working, working for the township for the next two weeks. I, the easy answer, general answer is, I don't know exactly how much time I would have, because I haven't been in the job. So I can estimate that I may have some extra time, but I don't really know, because I haven't done the job yet. I haven't confirmed with my next employers either, because if that was the chosen option, I can confirm with that as well. It's not unusual for municipalities to get outside help from other CAOs. If that's a direction that council wants to go, I can bring a list of people who may be able to offer that to an upcoming council meeting.
Thank you. Claus?
Thanks very much, Reeve. One thing I know is the strength of Jasmine's, and I'll say it directly to Jasmine, it's excellent at being able to manage your time. Her tasks have been always done to the letter and so forth. The other comment I want to make is that I feel that I know an outside agency would, would help us, and there's lots of people willing to volunteer. But who knows better, the job that needs to be done at hand, what needs to take place in Jasmine? She's been in it, she knows what we want, she knows what's required of it. And the county has always been very flexible in allowing some of their staff to help out various municipalities. So I still stand by my earlier comment that I feel the best option is number one, for the current clerk administrator to help us out through this process.
Okay, so Jasmine, you were saying earlier that you want to get consensus from us. I'm not sure that it has to be consensus. We can actually, this is a special meeting, so we can make, we can make a motion and vote on it, can't we? Oh, you're muted?
Forgot my muting. And so overall, we have like a number of different items. So what I'd suggest is we get consensus on each item and then do an overall vote, which is all of the directions. And I can, I'll do a recap of each of the items.
Okay. So Jeff, did you want to say something first?
Just more to further home, sort of drive that point with, especially with the outside agency, because the other thing too as well is it'd be nice if Jasmine, obviously, in the next couple of weeks, has the ability to, because I hear what Claus is saying too as well, and to focus on, on the priorities of the job. Because right now, we've always, obviously been out of a clerk administrator for a couple of months too as well. Just so the job itself is focused on, and that's where an outside agency can be helpful for that. And once again, to reiterate, and I haven't really heard anybody comment on it, but I'd like to know, like, the training aspect. When we hire this person, we need a little bit of a handoff. And once again, like, I think that is a better, that's a very good utilization of her time. And exactly to Claus's point of the understanding the secrecy of the township and what needs to be handed off. It's during the training process that that needs to be done. And if we, if we can get time for that, and maybe if Jasmine can get time away from her current employer, not even like, so that she can dedicate some time for that training. It's kind of an extension on this point from the, from the agenda. So I would lean towards the outside agency more for the fact that Jasmine can continue to work on the pressing needs right now in the township. And then we can utilize that time when she's not working with us to be our trainer for the new person.
I'd like to say, you know, I would be more than happy to provide some additional time to make sure that everybody's up on what was going, going on.
If I could interject Reeve real quick, sorry about that?
Yes.
Does that mean, does that mean doing both Jasmine? Or is it, is it in the sense that, like, or is it better to utilize the trainings, the training avenue in your side of it?
Um. That's a hard question to answer. I'd be willing to do both, but in terms of ensuring, in terms of ensuring continuity of operations and making sure that the best option, like the township gets the best that they can get out of this process, I would probably say that spending some time with a new person as a training process would be probably the best use of my time. Does that answer your question?
It does.
So Jeff, you're saying you're leaning towards option one?
It's kind of an option one slash three, because it's more like, one, to utilize Jasmine on the current priorities and the after-training effect. And then maybe being able to utilize somebody, somebody else, if we can bring them in, just to make sure the burden's not too much. I mean, I completely, obviously, compliment Jasmine for everything that she'd be willing to take on. On the same token, I think it's our responsibility to make sure that we don't put too much on her, even if she's willing to take it. So I think that's a side of it. I just want to make sure, that's where I'm leaning right now, sort of a slide between one and three.
So you're leaning towards like a one slash three, which is kind of a combination, obviously, a combination. And that's kind of why I asked the question, if we would be able to utilize two people, which would be kind of a compromise, which is maybe that option one to three slide that you're talking about. That's kind of what I would like to see myself. But anyways, I'm going to go to Karen and then back to Claus. So Karen, please.
So the fact that we will have Jasmine's assistance for giving the new hire a heads up about getting them to speed, I guess, about what, what is going on in Montague, the actual fact that they're going to come to us experienced as in doing a position. There's not going to be, I mean, you hire somebody who's got CA or a CAO experience, and they come in, or even a deputy clerk where they're presently in a larger municipality, whatever. They're coming in with that side of it. So it's actual just the Montague side that they're going to have to come up to speed. But if they're doing any research whatsoever, being prepared to come for an interview, they're going to know exactly what we've been going on with and what we've had on the plate, you know, for the last year and moving forward into this year. So it's, that's the side that we want Jasmine for support on, is to give them the ins and outs about what we're working on, but the day-to-day duties, they should be competent in doing. So having the external sit for the interview process. Well, you can do that, Jeff, but I mean, come on now. You, you've got to be coming with a minimum experience. So you don't want somebody that's off the street. They're coming to us with experience, or at least that's what we're hoping for. So that's what, what we want. But so just having the external party sit for the interview side, and then having Jasmine available to assist the person on bringing them to speed.
Which, which basically is part of the hiring process, I think, also?
Not on the interview panel side, though.
No, but, but, but bringing that person up to, up to, you know, up to speed, as you say, that's still part of a good hiring process, as far as I'm concerned.
And I mean, the fact that Jasmine's not going to be there when they do come in, part of it could be that the information is there too for them to have the ability to review what exactly are the top things that we've been going on with, and what are the outstanding items that are still there to be addressed? I mean, I know we have the list that comes to council, but there's still some other things that are on the go.
Okay, so I'm going to, I think, so we really don't have a precise answer yet from you, Jeff, but I might have to go back to you. So we're, we're talking, the consensus from you is kind of like, is a one slash three. So I'm going to go around and, oh, before I do that, I do see your hand went up. Ian, please.
Yeah, thank you very much, Reeve. So I just want to, I just want to make sure I understand this right. So Councilor Carroll, what you were saying essentially is that we would use option three as the hiring process portion of it. And we would bring in someone, whether it be an outside agency or contractor or another CAO, this would be hiring, the selection process, more or less. And then we would use Jasmine, that would allow Jasmine to continue to get caught up, since we, as you stated, we haven't had a CAO for, for some time right now, so, you know, catch up on us. So, you know, catch up on us, get all the files current, I guess, would be a good, would be a good way to put it. And then, once we have the person in place, we will utilize her time that's, that's allowable. Jasmine has been very nice to, to, to uh bring forward her volunteer time to get the person up to speed with the um, ins and outs of Montague, so to speak, as to what, as to what's going on on a day-to-day basis and the long-term, short-term goals, plans and everything else are. Is that, am I saying that right?
Yep, the only thing is, um, in that, that would have to be, that would have to be happening after Jasmine leaves anyways, because there's no way that we're gonna have somebody in place by the time she leaves. So if, if what you're suggesting was to happen, it would be, it would have, it would have to be happening while she's at the county. I'm not saying it's not a bad idea, I think it's a great idea, but uh, I'm just saying that, I'm just pointing out that that would have to happen uh, at, uh, as long as the county okayed it. Um, I think Claus, you had your hand up, and then Jeff.
Yeah, uh, thanks Reeve. Uh, I too, like councillor Straight, just want to get straight in my mind exactly what's what, because we're splitting between one and three here now. And after sitting here to listen to the conversation, I can somewhat see the rationale behind that. I guess my question is that Jasmine would help out after we select a person to be the new clerk CEO uh, in the training process. And how much time would Jasmine have to provide clerk administrator in the interim, from the time she leaves till every time we get a new person?
Jasmine, you had your hand up?
Yeah, um, I think I can, I might be able to provide a little bit of, of clarity. So I think, I think we're generally talking about kind of an onboarding process. And I'm certainly willing to volunteer my time to assist with an onboarding process. And that onboarding process, what may vary depending on the individual they get hired. Um, so, you know, if somebody who's, they even from the county or from the area may under, may have a good knowledge of what's going on, maybe it's somebody who's a little bit farther out, they'll need a, a little bit more background. Um, I don't, don't think it's easy to estimate exactly uh how much time it would take, but I don't imagine it would be a significant amount of time. Um, so I think for that item, you could call that an onboarding process outside of the actual hiring process. So it's, it's a kind of like the final step of the hire, but um, when it comes to the actual hiring process itself, it's, um, option three would be to have an external person, whether it be a contractor or, or somebody uh else, like a local CAO. Yeah, that makes sense. So like, they're almost two separate items.
Yeah, uh, follow up there, Claus?
Yeah, thanks. So the outside agency would only be involved in the hiring process, not necessarily doing day-to-day clerk administration work for the township. Okay, I'm clear. To get this, because we now have split between one and three, so we've created, I guess we created item four.
Um, I think you can, you can, you could add the, the onboarding item as almost a completely separate item entirely.
Okay. So I'm, I'm Jeff, and then I'll go to the vote, Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, because I, I, I think that's exactly it, because I think in this timeframe too as well, this gives Jasmine the time to be able to go to her next employer, so the county. And say, okay, like, this is, you know, I, I, we want to be able to support uh Montague in this transition, which you've stated before, we've done this in the past. So I'm, I'm, you know, and then the county can come back and say, yes, we can, we can offer Jasmine support for, you know, that timeframe. And, and it might be ten hours a week, and, and, and we might be looking at it exactly to Jasmine's point, is we don't know when the person comes in, how much onboarding that they might need to know or, or, or go with. Um, and I think that's a, a, a good option, and that might be the best way to utilize uh Jasmine's time and get the best person uh up and running. So yeah, I hope that answers kind of exactly what councillor Straight was saying. Yeah, you're right, I think that's exactly right. That's my, that's sort of my thought process as far as, as far as how we would hire and go forward. So it's, uh, I guess the intern basis is, 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 that's the hard part is, so when, uh, who's, do we have, or do we have Andrew, who's our backup, sort of running the show when Jasmine steps away until we have the new person put into place then?
I'm just gonna preempt before we start to discuss this item, we will be bringing that item forward for, and an in-camera session on the eighteenth.
Okay, so what I'm going to do here is, I don't really think that we need to vote in this, because I do feel that, uh, I, um, I think we've already got a consensus then, that as far as the hiring uh, panel is concerned, then, um, we're, I think the consensus would be then, um, option three. Um, I think that's correct, unless I do hear any opposition at the moment to that, then I think that would be our consensus moving forward for you, Jasmine, for now. Yes?
So to clarify, um, can I note in the minutes that council provided additional consensus to, um, um, provide for an onboarding process for the new individual?
Yes. I believe that is consensus, unless I hear any opposition. Jeff?
I, I was just gonna mention, uh, because I know councillor Jennings brought up some names. Um, I don't know if they've been already forwarded to staff or staff are aware of them, but is that something that, uh, councillor Jennings was going to forward to, uh, off to staff to, or to Jasmine to contact to, I guess, get it all sort of formalized?
Um, so like Jeff, to answer that question, I, I think that those, those, those names should be forwarded, but Jasmine also mentioned that she could give us a list. So it seems to me that we need a further meeting to be able to choose who that outside agency is. Because Karen, you've got some names that you've already talked to. Um, Jasmine, you say you've got a list, which is probably different than some of Karen, Karen's names. And I think had we known, had we all known that we were able to go ahead and do that, uh, I, I personally didn't realize that we could actually go out and, and publicly or talk to people who may want this, want to help us. I might have been able to come up with different names myself. But uh, what's done is done, and um, so I, I do think though that we need another meeting, because uh, somebody's gonna have to choose who that outside agency is going to be. Yes, Jasmine?
Yes, and I will bring forward uh some names at an upcoming meeting of council. I'm not gonna make a commitment to the eighteenth, but it will be an upcoming meeting of council.
Yeah, so now just to be, bring everybody up to speed also, um, you, the process is already started. We've already put the, uh, put the word out for, uh, for, for a clerk administrator, right?
Yes.
So we're not really, uh, what, what, what's the deadline for applications?
The, uh, February ninth is the deadline.
Okay, so then we still have time for you to come back to, for us to make a decision who that outside agency is going to be?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so can we move on then, uh, Jasmine, to the second section that, uh, it issued?
I'm not used to talking so much.
Sorry Jasmine, before, sorry Jasmine, before I go back to you, I'm going to go to Ian.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, just a quick question, question for Jasmine. When was the, when was it posted, Jasmine?
On Friday of last week.
And do you have anything, is anybody, anything came in yet?
I have received one application, yes.
Right, alright, thanks.
Okay, over to you, Jasmine.
Great. So the next item is the shortlisting and selection process. I've only provided two options for council. Um, they basically, uh, the one is a selection panel of two members of council with the administrative support. So council can have a role in the selection process, um, using the job description and how that person would rank. Um, and as well as your chosen administrative support person. Um, and then the selection panel, with only two members of council, it means the selection panel can meet and discuss the shortlisting of candidates without um, requiring act- actual meetings of council. Um, and then ultimately, the selection panel can provide a written report to council with the preferred candidate. So that would of course be an in-camera, um, report. Um, I would recommend this option, just simply because it does provide for more flexibility um, in terms of council actually moving the process forward without having to have meetings. Um, you can also elect to have all of council meet to screen and select members. Um, it may extend the amount of time to complete the hiring process. So, um, and I think that most municipalities have shortlisting processes that are, uh, a little bit more dynamic.
Could, could all members of council be, become involved, say, after the first, the first part of the process, Jasmine?
Yeah, that's the next item that we're talking about, is the actual inter- interview process. So the shortlisting is basically choosing those members that would be, or the applicants that would be interviewed.
I see, yes. Okay, so first I have Ian and then to Claus.
Yeah, thank you very much, Reeve. So yes, I guess my question is to Jasmine. So if, if you went with all of council to review and select, can, can the um, list of applicants be just emailed to each councillor? They could number them one through, if there were ten applicants, one through ten? And then sent back to you, to you for, or to whoever for the, uh, for a rating, you know what I mean, uh? Is that, is that, so that we don't have to have all these council meetings? Is that possible?
It's, it's, it's theoretically possible. Um, and I think it could be argued that, I mean, I think there's an argument to say that that probably wouldn't constitute, you know, a meeting, um, in ter- in terms of like, it's, it's, it's kind of on the edge in terms of the openness, I guess. And emails don't really facilitate, I guess, a good discussion between members, so if you do have a disagreement, maybe, you know, it's harder to resolve, but it, it is a process that could happen, yeah. I, I don't think it would be. Yeah, I think it could work, yeah, if it's done right, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we should be worried about having an extra meeting or two, as this is a pretty important issue, so, uh, that, that's my personal opinion, is that I like the idea of having it open to the, so that everyone hears what's going on. And, um, and, and, and doing it that way. Uh, I'm not, did you want to follow up Ian there?
Yes, yes, please, Reeve. Uh, I, I'm not saying that we don't want to have a meeting about it. What I'm saying is that if you get ten applicants, all the, all the applications get sent out to council. Council obviously has, it's been provided the, uh, the, uh, duties and, and, uh, the surrounding, surrounding position, so you can sit there and you can list them one through ten or whatever it is. And, and it goes back to, to the office, they can, they tabulate it, and then we can have an in-camera, it has to be in camera. We'd have an in-camera meeting and say, here, here's the, here's the top five, or here's the top four, or top six, whatever, however many you want to interview. And at that point in time, it can be, it can be debated, but it's, as far as council goes, that's the best way, in my opinion, that's fair and transparent. And council has, every member of council has an opportunity to weigh in on, on the pros and cons of each individual.
Yeah, I, I, I'm with you there, Ian. Um, Claus, and then to Karen.
Uh, thanks Reeve. Uh, I like option number two, where all councils involved, and I do agree with councillor Straight, that this can be done uh, expediently by sending emails of all the applicants out, and we review them, and then when we meet, uh, we don't have to sit there and read all the applications over, we've already studied them. And, uh, questions can be asked, and the process could speed up quite good. But I really feel that all councils, all members of council should be involved in this process, so sending out the applications to each one of us by email, I have no problem with that.
It can?
I do want to clarify, I mean, we probably send them out through the actual, um, like, through our secure system, like the in-camera system. Um, but we, those types of, those types of things can be, we can, we can iron those things a little bit.
Whatever, whatever, Jasmine.
Okay, uh, Karen?
Yeah, so, uh, option number two for all of us to, to review and select. Because, um, the person that's going to be sitting with us to do the process is going to be able to create a, an evaluation tool of how to shortlist when we have our meeting and go from there, so that's the, the best option. I mean, it would be in camera, so we would have all of us reviewing it and following the tool that's provided to us for how we shortlist, so that, you know, it's not, it's not just everybody's being involved, or, but they're gonna come up with a, an evaluation tool, and we use it and, and go forward from that one.
Okay, I, seems to me that I'm, I'm going to go to you, Jeff, first, before we actually finalize this, but, uh, no, I think I'll go to you first before I finalize it.
Uh, it sounds like we have consensus anyways. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with a, uh, with the, the person that we would put in place with, with a couple of council members to, to shortlist people. Uh, I'm all for us being the interview process. Um, I don't necessarily think we need five people there to do the shortlisting. Um, like, I mean, but I think, I think we're go- going that direction anyways, so I'm just kind of giving my two cents, but, uh, if that's a consensus, then that's what we'll do.
Okay, I, as I was gonna say then, I do think that we do have consensus, uh, to involve all of council. And, um, I think we have consensus to go ahead and, uh, um, in a safe, security way, secure way, to send out the, uh, emails to, uh, each person. Is that fine then, Jasmine, for that one?
Yes, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, on to the next one.
Um, I think this one's going to be pretty simple, uh, just consensus that we'd like the all of council to participate in the interview process itself.
I'm pretty sure that I can read between the lines here and everything that's been said already, that the option is exactly that, that all of us are involved in that. If I don't hear any opposition, then I think that's the consensus. Okay, Jasmine, you've got it.
Uh, the final one is changes to the job description itself. Um, I've attached one suggested change, um, just to remove the responsibilities for coordination of projects under the Drainage Act, has that been, has been assigned to the Public Works Manager. Um, I'm open to any feedback and, um, by consensus on changes to the potential job description.
I, uh, yes, Karen, and then to Ja- uh, Claus.
So one of the couple of things that I've seen that we're in it, like, for example, access registrar for marriages versus deaths according to Vital Statistics Act. Um, that's something that we could discuss about delegating, as well as serving as the lottery licensing officer, we could delegate that as well. Those are a couple of things to come off. Um, we can even do the commissioner of oaths, you know, like, there are some things that we could certainly take out that, um, that there, the ability to have other staff taking that over, um, on an ongoing basis. Um, I think we have that, the staff that can do that, so I think that those are just a couple of minor things. Um, I know that we've had some, uh, preparation um, of the, the agendas and the minutes. Um, I'm not sure where that one's still sitting. I mean, definitely the in-camera must stay with our CA. But, um, whether that somehow gets put into place, since it had been happening, I think that's an option too. Cause, um, I know we were going to look at revisions of this job description, and I was sort of hoping to do that before it was posted. Um, anyway, that's my comments.
Thanks. So before I go to Claus, uh, Jasmine, I saw your hand up, maybe you want to answer this, uh, what Karen was saying.
Um, I think the, overall, the, um, the Vital Statistics Act can be removed in general, it's, it's not something that is really, uh, it's not something that's done at the local level anymore. At least not in our township. Um, the commissioner of oaths is, um, it's enshrined in the, um, actual act itself, that a, a clerk is a commissioner of oath by virtue of office.
But that's only one position, others can be delegated, designated by the municipality. I mean, I know other municipalities that have pretty well every person that works in their finance office as a commissioner of oath, to be able to, you know, accept the payment, stamp the documents and go from there, so it's an option. There can be more than one position, so it's, it's.
There can be more than one position, absolutely, but they are, they are commissioner of oath just by virtue of being a clerk.
But I think we could look at designating others, so that it is not just the primary focus of our CA.
So I think in the past, uh, Reeve, certainly myself, uh, has been a commissioner of oath. Okay, Claus, and then back to Jeff.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thanks Jasmine. Yes. You hear me okay?
Go ahead, thanks.
Yeah, thanks Reeve. Uh, thanks Jasmine for that. Yeah, thanks, Reece. Uh, thanks, Jasmine, for that recommendation of the Drainage Act. I think that certainly fits well with the public works manager. As far as the commissioner of oath, uh, I feel the clerk administrator should be the one that does that. Yes, the Reeve is head of council. And can also do it, but I would leave it there, just the head of council, the Reeve, and the clerk administrator as commissioner of oath. It's a very, uh. It's a very legal situation that. This person has taken on, so I wouldn't change it around and put a whole bunch of other people onto that list.
Okay, uh, Jeff?
Yeah, a lot of it too as well, I think, from my, my side of it is a a lot of what's in the job description, especially at the, the top end managers, is how they delegate it out anyways. So I mean, because it's in there, that means that that's what they're responsible for, so if they decide to delegate or to. You know, and that could be, that could be discussions that we have as councils, we go forward saying, well, we're looking for. Uh, that to be delegated and not to be. Uh, added on to other people's jobs or 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 things like that, but a lot, a lot of it at the end of the day is really just how the, how the, the work is delegated out. I think even the way that we have our admin assistants supporting with the, uh, the 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 agenda writing, I think that's fantastic. It's a, it's a way of delegating some of those tasks. Um, and that's really just, that's part of the manager's job, is to delegate the ones we can. It's hard to take things out of a, out of a job description, obviously, the one that's. Going to the public works one is 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 makes sense, but it's hard to take things out of a job description when that's, that's what, you know, their, their. Their job is to make sure that gets done, doesn't mean they literally have to be the person to do it.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, Karen?
So. We should have had a review of the job description before it was posted to take it out. They still then in turn would be overseeing it because the person doing it is reporting under them. But I mean, if we look at. How other municipalities handle things, this is how it's been done in Montague, but doesn't mean it's the way it needs to be, and we could have been moving forward. And we could have put an ad out a little different. We were progressing that way. And I'm not sure why we need to stall, we could have kept going, but anyway, it is what it is, the ads out there and. We'll just make changes as we go along.
Yep. So so Jasmine, do you have enough consensus on this part of it?
I guess I, I believe so. I have noted the removal of the vital statistics. Um, I I I believe, yes, I have enough consensus.
Okay, then. So we've moved through the four things that you needed consensus on. Uh, what's the next step that you need right now?
Uh, that's it. So to recap, so council is aware, uh, before you pass your motion. Um, you've provided consensus for option three for administrative assistance, which is the use of it outside individual. Um, the staff will be providing, um, a report at an upcoming meeting, um, to select that individual. Um, council also provided additional consensus to review an onboarding process with, um. For the new person with the current clerk administrator, that's me. Um, and then, uh, selection panel would be option two, so that's all of council to participate in the selection process. Um, and for the interview process, option one is for all of council to participate in the interview process. Uh, for the job description, uh, we had, um, removal of the vital statistics, um, requirements. That's what I have down.
And the change of the drainage.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, uh, Jasmine, for that. Uh, then, um. Moving forward, I have a motion here. Uh, it was moved by Karen Jennings and seconded by Ian Straight. That council received the following report. That's the clerk administrator hiring process report, and that the following be approved, that council provide direction. On the preferred process for the clerk administrative hiring. Which is exactly what we've done. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you for that, Jasmine. Uh, I think that's it then, uh, except for the next. Uh. To confirm the proceedings, I think what I'm going to do is, um. Before I do the next motion. Jasmine, I'm gonna ask you, if we are Christie. If we have any questions, uh, from the public.
I have no questions here on my end.
Okay, thanks. Okay, then, uh, we have a motion here, was moved by Ian Straight. And seconded by Claus Vandemir, that bylaw thirty-eight seventy-six twenty twenty-two. Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the special meeting of council at its meeting. Uh, held on January the thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Be read for a second and third time and passed, signed and sealed this thirteenth day of January, twenty twenty-two. All in favor? That's carried. Uh, then the next motion is, uh, moved by, was moved by Karen, uh. Cause Vandemir and seconded by Jeff Carroll. That this meeting do now adjourn at six fifty-six. Six fifty-six P M until January the eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. At six P M or until the call of the reef, subject to need. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. And I wanna thank you, Jasmine, and all of council for, um. Consent to, uh, meet tonight as a special meeting. And move this process forward, so thanks to everybody. And I think that brings us to the end of the meeting.